Good evening, everyone. I will call to order this meeting of the Corder Madara Town Council in regular session. We have just come back from a closed session and have nothing to report out at this time. So if we can have a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here. And as you may have noticed, four of us are here and one of us actually is not here. Councilman Beckman notified the staff on October 3rd that he would be attending remotely today for Just Cause. Councilmember Beckman, what are the circumstances of the Just Cause for today's video conference participation?
I am participating remotely due to travel to the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach where I am a voting delegate for the town.
Thank you. And do you have anyone over the age of 18 present at your remote location with you?
I do not.
Then can we please have a roll call vote of the council to approve Councilmember Beckman for remote participation in this meeting?
Councilmember Andrews.
Present, yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
And now if you would please all join me in a salute to our flag. Thank you all very much. At this point, we will open the floor for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council on any item that is not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. I won't read all the rest of it because it looks like nobody's moving to the microphone in-house. Do we have anyone online who would like to say something?
We have a hand raised from Connor. And we did receive two emailed public comments for open time that were shared with the town council and uploaded to the website for the public to view. Connor, you can go ahead and proceed when you're ready.
Great, thank you. I hope I don't need an excused reason to be on Zoom because I'm not sure my reason's very good. But Connor Johnston from Mill Valley, and I just wanted to briefly encourage the council, specifically the mayor, to agendize the resolution in support of the Make Polluters Pay legislation in Sacramento. I have been fortunate over the last year or so to be part of the statewide coalition working to hold large oil and gas companies responsible for their contribution to climate change. And it is an extensive coalition of climate groups, environmental justice groups, unions, a lot of working people, the teachers, and incidentally, many of the cities and counties throughout the state. So by expressing your support for this legislation, you would be joining places like Berkeley, San Francisco, the city of Los Angeles, who have all passed resolutions in support of these bills. And there is quite a bit of urgency because the bills have carried over from this year's session into next year's session, which means they essentially have to sink or swim, live or die in January of 2026. So if the town of Corder Madara is interested in being on the record in support of really what is a generational cause, I would encourage you to do it as quickly as possible. And please agendize Councilman Beckman's resolution and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for weighing in. Is there anyone else online?
No other hands raised from attendees online.
Okay, thanks very much. We will move on to item number three, which is the interview of a Parks and Recreation Commission applicant. And I believe the name is Daniel Smack. Thank you, Daniel. Could you come up to the microphone? Welcome. Thank you for raising your hand as a volunteer. Always appreciated. So you received in writing the questions or sort of the general outline of our conversation tonight. So if you could start with an opening statement, just a minute or so to tell us about who you are, your family.
Sure. I don't think I can get this thing to stand up all the way. So I might just have to hunch over a little bit.
Want to just hold on to it? Can you not prop up the microphone?
Better.
Okay, there you go.
I'll just hold on to it. Thank you for having me. Thank you for interviewing me. My name is Daniel Smack. I have been a Corder Madara resident since 2018. I live down the street right here on Willow Abbs, so I'm very nearby. I have two small girls. One is four, Gigi, and one is six, Coco. Gigi is in mountain school. They both went through mountain school. And Coco is now at Neil Cummins. And I was just talking to Adam over here, because on my application, I put, "Now is the time where I start to see," something like this. I'm starting to see the light where the demands of two children, having two children under four, you know, were just crazy. Now I feel like I'm moving out of that and I need new hobbies. But I've been threatening to get involved for a really long time. And it's become a running joke with my friend group that I actually should do something and get involved. So when I saw the opening, I jumped at it. I think, I come from a small town in Northern California called Valley Springs in Calaveras County. It's much smaller than this, but I, my wife and I lived in San Francisco briefly before moving to Corder Madara. And I think it is heaven on earth. It's Shangri-La. Like, I love Corder Madara so much. I think it's really the sweet spot. I'm probably over my minute. But just another quick story, like, when I tell people that I'm from Marin, I feel like I'm bragging. And especially when I tell people where I live and the way I describe it, I go, "You're coming over the hill. You've got all the fog that's coming into Mill Valley. As soon as you see the sign for Corder Madara, fog stopped, it's sunny, it's beautiful. And guess what? It's perfect. It's not too hot." And then you just, it's just heaven. Except when it's windy a little bit, but I think, you know, it's a small price to pay. But the thing I love the most is the small-town community feel of all of Marin, really. And I think what makes that and what connects people are the public services, parks and rec, and events that happen in the town to bring people together. And so, in short, that's my reason for jumping at this opportunity and applying. And I really would just love to contribute.
Thank you. So what is it about the Parks and Rec Commission that interests you? What are the qualities and your experiences and expertise that you would bring to the planning, I mean, to the Parks and Rec Commission?
So like I said, I think, I believe that the biggest impact on creating community happens through parks and rec. And this is where we're creating beautiful, safe spaces for people to come together and find each other, enjoy time with their families, connect with their community. And so I think that has the biggest impact on creating community, especially through events and these shared spaces. As far as my experience, I've had a lot of past experience a long time ago with volunteer orgs, various organizations. This was mostly when I was younger, before I started my professional career, involved with Habitat for Humanity, involved with the United Nations Association, running various campaigns for different initiatives. And I really loved, I really loved that work. And I find a lot of fulfillment in that work because I feel, I like giving back. Starting my professional career, I haven't had a lot of opportunities to, or maybe, I should say, I just, I haven't prioritized some of those opportunities, but especially when, after having children for, you know, a few years, it just gets, it just gets hard. And like I said, now I'm starting to see the light. So it seems like now is the time. And as far as the experience that I would bring, I think, I think it's, the most visible impact on a community is also in these spaces. Right? And so when people are, and sometimes it's really hard whenever you're a town and you're spending money on anything, it's difficult, I think, to get buy-in. Right? So when people feel that they're getting something back, like, just a very small example, and again, I'm probably way over time here. Oh, just a few seconds of your time. But a very small example of that is shortly after I moved here, I would walk the path quite a bit. And then that bit by the canal, that's, you know, over here connecting the path to, I can't remember what that street is, was kind of run down. And then one day, it was like, like, had new fine gravel on it. It was paved, and you could actually ride your bike on it. And I was like, this is what I pay tax dollars for. This is great. I also think that I can really, so my role right now, in my professional role, is I'm a senior director of product marketing for a software company. That is about understanding your client base, understanding your audience, understanding who your customer is, understanding what problems you are solving for them, but then also communicating those problems in the right way and telling the right story. And if you do that and communicate those, how you're solving those problems and you tell that story, you get a lot of buy-in. And people understand that, oh, this is why I'm here. This is why I live here and pay tax dollars, because I'm getting so much value out of this. And I really think that that's where the most, Parks and Rec is where the most visibility and the biggest impact is.
Thank you. So have you had a chance to familiarize yourself with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan? And from it, can you give us an idea of what you see as the big challenges and big projects moving forward?
So I've familiarized myself with it conceptually. I had to get the warning email from Lorena earlier. And I said, "Oh, wait, I need to look at that master plan." It's a lot of documentation, so I have not been able to go through it in as much detail as I would have liked yet. But from what I understand, I understand it to be a plan to, from now until 2030, around refurbishing quite a lot of the parks and bringing everything back up to making whatever has been dilapidated safer, having space for better public restroom and things like that, which I think is all important. And then it lays out the priorities, right? I think the biggest challenge that I see there is funding, but that's always the biggest challenge, right? And prioritizing funding and what comes first and where the biggest impact is going to be. And to me, again, it's just about how are you telling that story? How are you communicating it? And how are you making your audience and your customer base, which are all the residents in Corder Madara, feel heard and like they're getting value out of whatever you're doing? And that's where I think my particular strengths and expertise can help, as well as with, and this is a question that I posed to the commission when I attended a meeting earlier last month, was how are you setting goals and then measuring against those goals after it's done? And I think the answer was something like, "Well, we don't do it too well, and we probably should do it better." And that's, again, that's something I excel at right now in my, in my professional career. I always have a mindset of understanding a problem-first mindset. I'm not coming with any preconceived notions about what the solution is, but we're always addressing a problem, being able to articulate that problem, and then from there, gathering community feedback to understand what the solution should be, and having measurable goals that we're pulling afterward and continuing to get refreshed feedback, or so you can iterate on, you know, whatever the initiative was. As I think having a plan for that is really important.
Okay. Next, the question is, there are many different types and ages of people in Corder Madara, from one to 100, singles, couples, families, the whole gamut. How do you make sure that you are serving or wanting and tending to serve all of those groups?
I think the primary group that you want to focus on is fathers with two daughters aged four and six. No.
That's what we were worried about.
I think it's just about making sure that you're hearing, that every single group and demographic is represented, right? And that you're hearing them. And then, understanding that you're not going to have necessarily the same amount of volunteers from every single group raising their hand. So having to actually go and solicit that and be proactive about getting the opinions of every single group when you're, when you're working through that feedback loop, I think that's, that's what it is, just making sure everybody's represented and their voice is heard.
So other than a sense of humor, what are some of your strengths and weaknesses, if you will, that you would bring to the commission?
So my weakness is really that I have none. I'm just kidding. Let's start with, let's start with strengths. I believe that, again, when it comes to understanding, taking an approach of understanding a problem, being objective about the solution, understanding your audience, getting feedback, that cycle that I mentioned, I'm very used to running that within my day-to-day work. And it's really just a strategic approach to how are you solving problems and serving your customer. And again, the customer being every resident of Corder Madara. So I think I excel in that. I am more action-oriented. So I would say that a strength of mine is, and this, it's not like I'm, would be an executive on this commission, so nothing would be up to me, but I am biased toward coming to a decision and then moving toward action. And I think that might be, on the flip side, perhaps, a weakness. I'm not necessarily used to this type of forum or this type of committee. I don't, I have to, I've got to learn the ropes. I don't know all the rules. I have no idea why we had to vote on Mr. Beckman joining from Zoom. So I don't know these things yet. But I am willing to learn and I adapt quickly.
A good default on all of those questions is state law. So I'm also asked to ask you, how would you reconcile, in the case that you were making a difficult decision in a public setting, how do you reconcile your personal opinions and emotions? Should they conflict with policies and regulations and maybe even your fellow commissioners? How do you handle conflict internally and externally?
Great question. I would simply take a step back. I actually work, the company I work for now, and the, in a particular business unit I work for is compliance and ethics. And so we deal with conflicts of interest all the time. We have solutions that's around those ethical, ethical behavior within, within companies and conflicts of interest and what that process looks like for disclosing conflicts and then recusing, or having some sort of, at the very least, like, you know, having some sort of signed statement saying, you know, "I won't, I won't do this," or "I'll take this action." So whatever the process is that the council has in place, I would of course follow, but I'm very familiar with these types of, avoiding these types of conflicts of interest.
Okay, thank you. And then there's a question about your commitment. Really important to state that the council would like to emphasize that attending meetings is a fundamental part of every member's duties. Members are expected to attend all regularly scheduled meetings, or a minimum of 75% of those meetings in a fiscal year. The Parks and Rec Commission meets on the fourth Monday of each month, plus occasional special meetings as needed. Meetings begin at 6:30 PM and run approximately two hours. Expected to read the agenda and materials provided and come ready to weigh in intelligently. And so considering all these expectations, do you feel you are able to commit to the term you have applied for on the Parks and Rec Commission?
I do. And furthermore, I'll look at my calendar and disclose any, if there are any times which I would have been away. I do.
And then you're entitled to a one-minute closing statement.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I ask questions after that?
The council will have an opportunity to ask you questions, and then we will ask the public for their input.
Yes, I believe that I would be able to commit to that. I do travel for work on occasion that sometimes includes a Monday. Seldomly, I would say, it's the fourth Monday of the month, but it's difficult to anticipate. So in that, in that sense, I just want to understand, in that case, what is, what is the process? Is there an opportunity to join virtually, you said 75% of the time? So I want to be upfront about, sometimes I do have to travel for work. I don't anticipate it always being on the fourth Monday of the month, but.
Do you have some control over your own schedule when you do schedule meetings? Or is it something that's out of your control?
I have control over my schedule when I schedule meetings on a regular basis. When I travel, I do not necessarily, because it might, and it might be a strategic team meeting off-site. It might be a conference that I have to attend. Those are usually the only reasons why I would be traveling for work.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you very much. I come back to the council now to see if anybody has any additional questions. Jim?
Yeah, I have a question. Which part of town do you live in? Is it, you know, Madeira Gardens?
Old Town, right here down the road, Willow Abbs.
Okay.
Anything else? Opening it up to the public now, does anyone want to grill this potential volunteer? Oh, I don't see anything here. Is there anybody online with a hand raised?
No hands raised from attendees online and no emailed public comment for this item.
Okay. All right, so I'll bring it back to the council for any comments and/or a motion. I just wanted to make sure that you had asked all the questions you wanted to ask.
I do want to ask one question. And this is to anybody on the council. Why wouldn't I want to do this?
Good question. Well, I served on Parks and Recreation for a total of about 12 years. And we would need to sit down and have a nice bottle of wine to have that conversation.
I'll take you up on it.
I can help you with that too, because I chaired Park and Rec for about four or five years. And I had a really great experience with it, like, really great. I mean, there are some ups and downs at times, but I had a great experience. I think you'll enjoy it, and I think you'll be good at it.
And I would say that the greatest challenge for those who are used to working in private enterprise is that things take much more time, just because of all the different moving parts and the different people involved, that it's a very, and bringing the public along the way, it's a much slower process. So that's what you have to, probably the greatest thing that you'll see different from your private.
My company's pretty slow.
Oh, good. You'll fit right in. Okay, so do I, is there a motion? Do we have a?
I'll go ahead and make the motion point, Daniel Smack, Smack, sorry, to the Park and Rec Commission for the noted term that's in the staff report.
Second. I'm sorry, Eli, I didn't, I didn't, did you have your hand up at any point? I didn't even come to you.
No. No, thank you. And my only comment is just, I want to thank the applicant for being willing to step up and serve your community. So it's, we're lucky to have folks like you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion?
Yes.
A second?
Yes, we did receive a second from Vice Mayor Thomas. So I'll go ahead and do the call the vote. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you and congratulations. Look forward to seeing you around. Welcome. Hope you'll come to Oktoberfest on Saturday.
Can I ask Lorena a question? Is there an online class on the Brown Act? I can't remember.
There is information that I send all appointees regarding the Brown Act, training, who to get in contact with on, with staff, and invite him over to his oath. It's like an introductory email with a lot of resourceful information for, especially for new appointees.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to number four, presentations. So I'd like to take responsibility for Phoebe being here because Adam wrote in his Friday report about this. And I was like, holy cow, that is a big accomplishment. And I think it's just a great example of real leadership and why Corder Madara continues to be the little town that's doing big things. And I just said to Adam, I wrote back, and I said, "How do we make a bigger deal out of this? This is big." So Phoebe's here to give us a report on the new environmentally preferable purchasing policy.
Yeah, it's certainly a mouthful. Just, just very quickly, but thank you. And I'm glad we're able to highlight this work, really. And I just want to give some kudos to Phoebe, who spearheaded this effort, and it's been on the work plan. It is one of our work plan items. I think it's, so just, Phoebe's worked with all of our town departments on this, and it's been a team effort and just really comprehensive and thorough work. And so I'm excited to have Phoebe here to highlight this and just clarify that this is an administrative action, so there's no action taken by the council this evening. It's really a presentation on what we're implementing at the staff level and for our town organization.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening, mayor and council members. I'm excited to be presenting this recently finalized environmentally preferable purchasing policy, or EPPP for short. And, and so as Adam mentioned, this was one of our work plan items this year, actually rolled over from last year. And some of the reasons why we wanted to develop this policy were, of course, to reduce the environmental impact of town purchases and projects, and to do that by providing some clarity and guidance to staff who are purchasing items, so they know what the most environmentally friendly option out there is. And the policy also supports multiple climate action plan goals around energy efficiency, low emission vehicles, water conservation, and zero waste. And it also incorporates and will help us comply with several state laws around, related to sustainable purchasing. Having an EPPP is also a requirement of some grant programs, specifically some cow recycle programs that we've used in the past to purchase waste stations for the public parks. So this will help increase our eligibility for those programs. And it does implement one of our cap actions, which calls the town, for the town to adopt a sustainable purchasing policy that emphasizes recycled materials and Energy Star certified appliances and office equipment. So this policy covers that and a bunch of other things that I'll go over. So the development process for this policy started with reviewing other Marin County and nearby jurisdictions' environmentally preferable purchasing policies or similar guidelines, as well as the state's policies and regulations that relate to sustainable purchasing. And the best practices and requirements from that research were incorporated into the draft, which was then reviewed by all of the town department heads and main purchasing staff in departments. And department heads and staff provided really helpful feedback about other categories that they'd like to see covered in the policy, as well as feedback on the feasibility of the proposed guidelines. And that feedback was incorporated into the draft that was presented to the Climate Action Committee at their May 21st meeting. The committee also had some great feedback, and we were able to incorporate most of that into the final version that was finalized on September 19th. As Adam mentioned, this is really intended as internal guidance for purchasing staff. So you'll see throughout the document, there's links to resources and tools to help staff find compliant items. And the document's organized into the main purchasing categories of the town, which includes energy, office supplies and equipment, which is everything from laptops and electronic appliances to paper purchases. Also covers kitchen and cleaning supplies, town vehicles, and public works products and practices, which is a large category that has everything from landscaping to construction standards and covers public work projects. And the document incorporates both requirements that are from state law and council direction, as well as standards that are sort of best practices, but not requirements. So an example of a state law that's incorporated in there is SB 1383 that covers a lot of recycled paper purchasing requirements that local jurisdictions have to follow and document. And then there's also council direction, like the direction to purchase 100% renewable energy through MCE's deep green program. So those are requirements that are in the document, and it tries to be clear about when it's a requirement. It identifies the body or the law that requires it. And then. And then for the items that are, or the guidelines that are more guidelines, and those are to be weighed among other considerations like cost, durability of the items, effectiveness, and of course, availability to make sure that we're able to meet the community and communities' needs and continue these functions in a reasonable way. And so this document is really enhancing and elevating sustainable purchasing as a consideration throughout the organization. A lot of these, a lot of the standards included in the policy have been in place for some time, because sustainability has been a priority of the community and the council for many years. So there's, it's not a total overhaul of purchasing, it's just making improvements. So some of the new practices that have been implemented since the policy was finalized include switching over to more environmentally friendly cleaning supplies and starting to specify the use of low carbon concrete in public works projects. And further implementation is expected to be a sort of ongoing process with annual evaluations and check-ins with each departments to see how implementation is going and see if there's new products that are available that they can switch over to. And then although this is intended as internal guidance, staff do anticipate referencing it in the update to the purchasing ordinance that's planned for later this year. And that's all I have for you on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, if I can just add one last thing, this actually gave us an opportunity once we, Phoebe developed this and we approved it. Just want to highlight as well Lorena's work on creating sort of an Intranet site for us that is, makes these policies or this policy and other policies more readily available to all staff at any given time. And so we've never really had a centralized place for all of our internal organizational policies. And so thanks, Lorena, for that. And it's just a good example of really our team working together to get something done that is a council priority, I know. So hopefully, I'm happy to see this on the, this presentation and looking forward to your questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the council for either Phoebe or Adam? Are not seeing any? Are there any comments from the public on this item?
Yes, we have a hand raised from Roy Wolford.
Hello, Mr. Wolford.
Good evening. Wanted to kind of dive into two items in detail on what are being, what's being purchased. And one of them is the electricity from MCE. When purchasing from MCE, the energy electricity, that electricity is not being delivered to the buyer. What's being actually purchased are contracts to generate electricity. So one of the questions I have is, how much renewable energy is actually being delivered to the town that's being purchased? So the write-ups for MCE make it sound like, oh yeah, I'm doing a great thing, getting 100% renewables, but that's really not the case, okay? It's purchasing offsets. And somehow or another, I just don't think, I was in purchasing, I was a corporate purchasing manager for seven years, and that seems very shady, and it also seems very political as opposed to actually buying something and getting it delivered. And the other item is on the concrete. What are this, does the town have very detailed, specific specifications for like the mixed design, the curing time, environmental conditions to be poor, temperature, humidity, that sort of thing, quality materials? So we have specifications that are delivered to the contractor? And also, how do we verify that that concrete is low carbon concrete and it is made to the very exacting specifications that have been provided? So I hope we can get some answers to that, but I really am concerned about the renewable energy program, because what you're buying is not being delivered. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the, online?
No other hands raised from attendees online.
And can someone reach out to Mr. Wolford?
Absolutely. I was gonna say, we'll follow up with Mr. Wolford and get our public works team on the second question, certainly, and answer that. And I don't know if Phoebe had anything to respond to on the MCE question, but if not, we can follow up as well.
I think a follow-up is fine. Okay, well, then coming back to council, if no one else has a comment, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming to Corder Madera and doing all the amazing work that you're doing. It gives me something to talk about and have pride for when I'm talking about our town and the things we're doing, so I really appreciate all your work, Phoebe. Thank you so much. Anybody else want to?
Yeah, it's wonderful to have such a comprehensive document and a good guide for, you know, articulating the intents, the intentions of our town, so thank you.
Anybody else want to pile on? Eli?
Super quick, just ditto, ditto my colleague's comments. Big thanks to Phoebe and the team for tackling this. I think this is a really important part of making sure that we are not just talking the talk, but walking the walk. So thanks for making it happen.
Very good. Talk in the talk, walk in the walk, and spend in the buck. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on then, if we're okay to go, on to the consent calendar. Just two items tonight. These are items that are, either have been discussed or do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Is there anyone who would like to request an item be taken off the consent calendar? Either from the council, or the public, or the staff? And if not, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Do we need to take a public comment on the consent calendar? All right, looking for any public comment in the room? And then also online regarding the consent calendar?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay, then do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar, sorry.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
All right, we're going to move on to public hearings. We actually have two tonight, and talk about the heavy lift. This is something that, I have to be honest, I did not read this entire staff report. It was just beyond the pale for me. But I know that it was very diligently worked out and detailing. I did look for typos and didn't find a single thing, but I think we're gonna hear from Bernie on this? Or Adam, or who's gonna give our report? So, or do I need to announce what it is?
Yeah, but I'll do it for you, because I think we can get away with just reading.
It's a lot of comments.
The first three lines, "Consideration and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings and Constructions of the Corder Madera Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code and local amendments."
And thereby repealing and reacting, reenacting a lot of different things. Okay, so who's got the staff report?
Yes, absolutely. This is, this is the expertise in the good hands of Bernie Zape, our building official over here, and Phoebe will also have a piece of this staff report as well, presentation.
Thank you very much. This is my turn now. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. It's my privilege to be here tonight. It's my privilege to work for the town of Corder Madera and the citizens of Corder Madera, and to work for you, and especially all of the team members here. Quite amazing. I see it, I get to witness it and see it every single day, and I'm in awe every day. Truly amazing. Had to say it, because it's too overwhelming to not say it. The reason we're here tonight, well, first off, Mayor, there will be a quiz after this, so I'm sorry you didn't do the reading assignment. So the reason we are here tonight is the adoption of our, my, the 2025 California Building Standards Commission Code, and, and with continued local amendments. So to give a real quick, brief overview of this, and then I'll go into a few details. If, so tonight, there's a lot of, all of the other jurisdictions in the entire state of California, all cities, towns, municipalities, counties, everybody, they are all adopting the same very code that we are adopting or talking about now. Some will choose to do nothing, but that same code will still be in effect on January 1st of 2026, even though they didn't do anything. The, the best part about adopting it tonight, or talking about it early and adopting it, is that we get to move some of our previous amendments along, and we repeal them, and we reenact the same. So it sounds kind of redundant, it sounds, doesn't sound right, but the law states that we will repeal those, and we will reenact them again. Now, the beauty about adopting the codes, the codes, everybody will do the same codes. The slight difference in the jurisdictions is that each community has their, they're very unique, and they have special items that they are fond of, that they need to have enacted as law. So those are our amendments or our ordinances. So each town, or city, or state, or the municipality, sorry, will have their own special uniqueness, or their own special amendments and adoptions and ordinance. So the beauty about talking about this now, tonight, is that we get to keep our ordinances, and some of them we deleted. The reason we deleted some of the older ones is because of the code elevated that same language, and now they're actually, they supersede what we did have, or they equaled what we had. So we got to eliminate a few amendments. That's just a little bit of housekeeping. And the amendments that we do consider, that we have considered, they're the same amendments that we had previously. We're just kicking the can forward a little bit. With that, there is a slight change, and I'll be done with my overview in a second. The California Standard Building Commission, they added a Part 7, which is the Wildland Urban Interface. That belongs to the Fire Department, and we'll hear a little bit more about that, but we won't be adopting it here for building, but Fire will be adopting it. But I don't want to steal Rubens Thunder. After all, he is Fire, and he has a better uniform on, and he has a lot of shiny things on there, so. So the, the Part 7 is new. No, it's, it's, it's more enhanced, it's improved, it's a good thing for us. It's all co-located now. They like it better, should like it better. We definitely like it better. The next thing that will be a slight change is that we, building, are adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. And the reason for that is that gives us an additional resource to, to adjudicate or to enforce properties that are in disrepair. So that just gives us a little extra hand, a little extra reinforcement for that. So with that said, I probably touched on a little bit of my, a few of the slides, however, that's the overview. There's, that's the, that's the general overview. But again, there will be a quiz after this at the very end. It might be a yes or no. So the California Building Standards Commission, or the code, the reasons for adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code, which is commonly referred to as Title 24. The California Building Standard Commission updates the code every three years. So they, they publish it every three years, and we have to go through this process every three years. Nothing new. It's been enacted for a great number of decades. The, this gives us an opportunity to incorporate local amendments on a regular basis every three years. And the reason that that's important also is that some things in the jurisdiction, they may change, and as they change, we change with it. Now, it may not be exactly what everybody would like, but it's all about life, health, and safety. And that's how the codes are driven, that's how they're written. It's life, health, and safety. The adopted codes will ensure consistency throughout the town, which again, is life, health, safety. I'm sorry. The, the, so the codes, the reason for the code is they, they adopt, or they require that efficient building components or elements are installed in public buildings and residential dwellings. That just ensures the, again, the life, health, safety of the structure and for the citizens, goes hand in hand. The California Building Standard Commission, they've included Part 7, as I stated, in the Title 24. It was previously reserved, so there was nothing there. But this year, they decided to co-locate other information into Part 7, which will belong, which is the Wildland Urban Interface, and that will be adopted by the Fire Department. This code cycle reduces the number of local amendments by updating the code sections, meaning the, the code has became a little more stringent in certain areas. And in some cases, they literally changed the word shall or may, which eliminated some of our amendments. Shall means you will, may means you could do it. So the code was ambiguous, like, or not ambiguous, code was very direct. It was either shall or may. And our language in our amendments was shall. So now the code is now shall, so we got to eliminate a few redundancies there. Just a little, again, a little bit of housekeeping. Every jurisdiction in the state of California will be going through the similar actions for this adoption process, as I had stated earlier. And again, if we did nothing, if we chose to ignore all of this, the 2025 building codes would automatically be in effect on January 1st, 2026, but that would be without any of our amendments. So, and again, if we did nothing, we'd be able to draft specific ordinances unique to our jurisdiction.
All right, so I'm gonna cover the, the reach code portion of the ordinance. So the building code includes all of these parts up here, and that may not even be all of them. But we only amend a couple sections to have local green building reach codes. So reach codes are amending the state building code, and we specifically amend the energy code, which includes energy efficiency requirements for buildings, and the Green Building Standards Code, which is also called CALGREEN, and covers all of the non-energy green building requirements, like EV charging requirements. Reach codes are called reach codes because they reach beyond or exceed the requirements in the state building code. And that's a requirement of a reach code, or any local amendment has to go beyond the state code. You can't set requirements that are less than the state code. So just as a reminder of why we're adopting reach codes, why we've adopted these in the past, and they're one strategy that can help us reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change. And in Corder Madera, like many communities, transportation is the largest source of emissions, at 72%. And following that is energy use in buildings, with natural gas use being 22%. So our reach codes address both of these sections by increasing EV charging infrastructure requirements to facilitate the transition to EVs and requiring energy savings in homes. Reach codes can also have co-benefits of promoting community health by reducing the air pollutants that are the byproducts of burning fossil fuels. And in the case of the energy code, it is required to save more energy than the state code, so it's increasing energy efficiency and reducing energy bills. And then we also have reach code changes that are aimed at preparing for future electrification. So if you're already doing a remodel, adding in conduit or wiring that makes it more cost-effective to electrify it. that makes it more cost effective to electrify at a later date. And then I'm not going to go through this timeline in detail, but just as a reminder of the multi-year process that we went through to develop our current reach codes and the community engagement that was involved at all stages of that, starting with Marin County developing model codes in 2022. And the town adopted the new construction portion of those model codes as part of the 2022 building code update. And then throughout 2023 and the first half of 2024, staff and the Climate Action Committee and the community were reviewing and analyzing the renovation portion of those reach codes. And that process resulted in our current reach codes, which were adopted at the July 16th, 2024 Town Council meeting. So we have two reach codes in effect today. This is our Single Family Renovation Energy Reach Code, which amends the state energy code to require renovation projects of 750 square feet or more in single-family homes to meet a target energy savings score. And that went into effect on October 4th, 2024, following approval by the California Energy Commission. And then our second reach code is an EV infrastructure reach code, which amends CalGreen to increase the requirement for EV chargers and readiness for EV chargers. And that code went into effect on August 15th, 2024. So because it's a new code cycle, as Bernie said, we have to readopt any local amendments if we want them to keep going on January 1st. And there's a couple new restrictions this year on how this process works. And that's due to the passage of AB 130, the Budget Trailer Bill, which incorporated some of the portions of a bill previously known as AB 306, which puts restrictions on changes to the building code that affect residential units between October 1st of this year and June 1st, 2031. Luckily, there are several exceptions that allow us to continue our previous local amendments. And the first is administrative exemption and that applies to the bulk of the amendments that you see in the ordinance. Most of those are administrative. They're related to how we enforce the building code and how we deal with building code violations. And so those are still permitted under AB 130. There's also a substantially equivalent exemption, which allows us to readopt reach codes that are in effect as of September 30th of this year. And that applies to our existing green building reach codes. And then there's a general plan exemption, which allows for the adoption of new or modified reach codes that align with the town's general plan and our greenhouse gas reduction strategy, which is our climate action plan. So staff are proposing with this ordinance to readopt the town's current reach codes as part of the 2025 building code adoption. There are a few small changes, which I'll go over, but overall implementation of these codes is going well and staff feel that they're still appropriate and targeted to address the main sources of emissions in Cordermedia. So they're essentially the same reach codes that you saw last July and that's why we're able to use the substantially equivalent exemption in AB 130 to readopt them. So what has changed? The first category is updates to align with the 2025 state building code. So there's been some updates to align with the new code language, make sure we're referencing the right sections of the code that might have changed. And there's also been some significant updates in the state code to the EV charging requirements that actually exceed our current reach code. So we can't set standards that are lower than the state code. So the areas where the state code now goes beyond our reach code, those have been taken out of the ordinance. The second category of updates here are updates to align with the new cost effectiveness study. And the state requires that amendments to the energy code be cost effective. And there's a statewide local energy team that completes studies demonstrating cost effectiveness. So one thing that has changed recently is the end of the federal solar tax credit. And that impacts the cost effectiveness of the solar measure that's included in the, in our ordinance. And because of that, we've had to lower one of the target scores for the newest building vintage. It's not expected to have a huge impact in terms of the effect of this code because the percentage of homes in Cordermedia that were built between 1992 and 2010 is a very small portion of our building stock. So much so that staff consider removing this vintage from the code entirely, but the Climate Action Committee felt it was important to keep that vintage in there to at least expose projects and homeowners in those homes to the types of energy savings measures that are available to them. And then the third change here is lowering the square footage threshold at which the single-family energy reach code applies from 750 square feet of remodel and/or addition to 500 square feet of remodel and/or addition. And that change is recommended to align us with nearby jurisdictions that have the same reach code. Almost all of the jurisdictions that have this reach code are either already at 500 square feet as their threshold or they're moving to that this code cycle. So that'll help us be consistent with nearby jurisdictions and, and provide that consistency for contractors also who are working across jurisdictions. And we expect about 15 to 10 additional projects a year to be impacted by this change. I did want to just mention briefly that I know when we talked about this last July, there was interest from the council in exploring potential replacements to the town's previous all-electric new construction ordinance, which as you know, was deemed to be unlawful in a case in the city of Berkeley. And so staff did evaluate alternative approaches to strongly encourage electrification and new construction. However, due to the updates to the state building code this year, there's been some significant advances in the base code requirements. So staff didn't feel that the additional effort in both creating and implementing the code would be warranted, given the small number of new construction projects in town and the strength of the state code already. And the Climate Action Committee did review staff's proposal and provided feedback at their August and September meetings. And some of their feedback included the recommendation to lower the square footage threshold to 500 square feet. And I'm happy to go into any of that in more detail, but for now I'll pass it to Bernie to wrap up the presentation.
Is Bernie's mic on?
It, it was, yes. Sorry. So are our options this evening? Sorry, that was just the, that was the, our option this evening is we introduce the ordinance as proposed. Two, we would instruct, or you could instruct staff to revise the proposed ordinance and return to the council for introduction of the revised ordinance. So you, that is your option to revise any ordinances that you may not feel that is adequate. One, the one in particular though, is the square footage from 750 to the 500. Again, that would, that would align us the same as other local jurisdictions here. So we would be following their suits, following their lead. And usually they follow our lead, but this time we gave them a win. Three, we can, you could direct staff to provide more information regarding the proposed ordinance. However, notwithstanding the action that was chosen by Town Council, application and enforcement of the California Building Standards Code is still mandated by California law. So we still have to adopt, or we could adopt the code or not adopt the code, but either way, it's still going into effect January 1st, 2026. If the Town Council chooses to introduce the ordinance, then it, then it must, it must set a public hearing for the adoption by reference of the California Building Standard Code as provided by the proposed ordinance for its next regular meeting on October 21st, 2025, in order for the ordinance to take effect on January 1st, 2026. So I believe this now goes, Amy, are you?
Are we ready to ask any questions of you guys? Is it time for that?
Yes. So now would be an appropriate time for any questions of council or public, but.
Okay. So looking to the council, are there questions? Councilmember Andrews.
If the, you're talking about the shift from 750 to 500 square feet. If that had been adopted initially, would it have affected any projects that you're aware of?
It, it would have affected right now about three or four projects. We would have had an additional three or four that it would have affected.
Okay.
And right now, we're speculating that if, if it is lowered to 500, we're speculating that the change would be approximately an additional 10 or 15. And again, that's a guess, but it's right around those numbers.
Question? Rosa? When you said that it would, if it go, now that it's going to 500, it would affect another 10 to 15. That's because they are building larger than that and they aren't, they are the other way around. It's small, they, they were building something smaller and it didn't fall under the law. Now they're building something, or the other way around, they're building something that's up to 750.
Let me try to untangle that. Though I think the way, I think the way that it would read is that if it was 750 before, it would affect those projects and larger projects. Now it would be 500 square feet and larger. So we would be gaining, we would be gaining about 10 to 15. And I think, I think 10 is a little, I think it's a little high. 15 is certainly high. However, it, it's a guess, but construction is, people are choosing to do, will be choosing to do more ADUs. So that's where that, that's where the numbers will probably be generated from, is from the additional ADUs.
And the, the ADUs are not subject to this ordinance. Creation of new ADUs are exempt.
Stand corrected.
So it's just their, their homes, additions to their homes, over 500 now. I mean, 500 now and then eventually 750.
So it's currently 750.
Oh, and it's dropping to 500. Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Well, other questions? I have one, but.
I just have a couple. There's no, the fee schedule doesn't change, right? Fees stay the same?
This has zero regards to the new fee schedule that we adopted that was in effect, is in effect right now as of July 1st, which is working out beautifully.
Okay. And then one other question, do you know if there's any costs in here that a homeowner all of a sudden or a resident would almost go, I didn't realize that there was an additional cost due to something that's being changed?
Is, is there an additional cost to go from 750 down to 500?
No, just in general, on anything that's being changed in here. Is there anything where it would trigger an additional cost for something?
Minimal at best and insignificant. Something that, no, I'm going to stop talking and answer that.
Thanks.
Eli, any questions up there? I just, I just have one. So the, going from 750 to 500 square feet, is that the amount of square footage you are adding to your home? Or is that the amount of square footage you are remodeling inside your home? What is the?
It's a, it's a combination of both numbers. So it's, it could be met through just remodeled space, just added space or a combination of both.
Okay. So if I'm just remodeling the interior of my home and I'm doing 500 feet or more, then I'm required to do the update on the entire home? Or just on that square footage?
So there's, there's a list of measures that homeowners can comply with. And so let me bring it up actually. I have that in here.
That they may comply with or that they shall comply with?
So they, they must meet the target energy savings score for their vintage. So it varies by vintage at the top here. And then the homeowner can choose from all of these measures. And so the idea is that they choose the measure that makes the most sense for their project, for their home, for their budget. So if you were, if you were doing a whole home remodel, it might make sense to do some of these insulation measures because you have all the walls open. If you're not doing that, you might want to choose an appliance replacement measure because you're not going to open up the rest of your home to add in insulation. So that's, there's flexibility in how the homeowner complies.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
I'm looking at the building vintage. If you have one of the Madeira Gardens bullshits with running water that was put up in the mid 50s, then you did a Prop 13 remodel in, say, the year 2000. What, what, where would the vintage be?
Good question. So I forget exactly how it's worded in the ordinance, but there is a provision where if there's been a major remodel to the home and either the home complied with the building code of that era or based on the building official's determination, it meets those standards, then it would fall under the vintage at the time of remodel rather than the initial construction.
Okay. Not seeing any other questions from council, I'll open it up to the public if there are any questions regarding this proposed ordinance, changing the building codes and seeing no one in the room. Is there anyone online?
No hands raised from attendees online. We didn't receive any email public comment for this item either.
So back to council for either comment or motion or both? Anybody?
If you want, I can make the motion. I go and make the motion. We introduce the ordinance amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Cordermedia Municipal Code to adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code, known as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations with continued local amendments.
Is there a second? Okay. Rosa?
Councilmember Andrews?
No.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to 6B, which is consideration and possible action to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 1502, adopting the 2025 California Fire Code and 2024 International Fire Code with amendments. We will have a staff presentation from probably this side. Hi, Ruben.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Ruben Martin, Fire Chief with the Central Burn Fire Authority. I'm here with my colleague, Chris Jewell, Fire Inspector, who did the majority of, if not all, the heavy lift on putting all the work in with all of our colleagues throughout the county within this fire code adoption. So we're here for our triannual code adoption cycle. The International Fire Code is, or the International Code Council adopts and publishes the international model codes every three years. The last one was published in 2021. And then we, after it's adopted, this current version was adopted in July of, or was created and adopted and published at the end of 2024. The California Building Standards Commission, along with the California State Fire Marshal in January of 2025, received the model code and then made their own internal California amendments, meaning everything that relates to the state of California when it comes to fire code regulations. That was then published on July 1st of 2025, which is then gives it to the local authorities and local fire departments, local agencies, with the ability to then, over the next 180 days, to review the California published fire code with their amendments to the International Fire Code and then allows the local agencies based on local findings that include topographic, geographic and seismic. Basically, if it's earthquake, your geography, geology, and then your local weather. We can make those findings based on local conditions and then make recommended amendments to the ordinance or to the fire code. The fire code for us as local agencies The fire code, um, for us as local agencies are allowed to go more stringent, but we can become more lenient than the state codes. So what we have before you is a, an ordinance that we've, is pretty much the same fire code ordinance that's been adopted by, um, the town of Corredamadera. The last adoption was in 2022, um, when we were before you in November. The biggest difference within today's California fire code is that there were sections that were taken out of it and put into a new section of the California WUWE code. Like, for example, um, Chapter 49 of the California Fire Code dealt with all the, uh, defensible space requirements, WUWE requirements, fire requirements within high fire and moderate fire hazard severity zones. So that was taken out of the fire code and put into its own section for the first time. So what we have before you, as I mentioned before, was, um, it's the exact same fire code with some of those chapters removed within there. And with that, um, before you, we've got three, um, options for you to take today. One is to adopt the ordinance as presented. Two is make any kind of recommendations to staff and modifications to the existing ordinance. Or three, send it back and reject the existing ordinance. Just to let you know is regardless of whether, if an action is taken here tonight, the California Fire Code becomes in effect on January 1st. However, what's different with the California Building Code, the California Fire Code, if we do not adopt it with our local amendments and it's in entirety, we're only allowed to enforce what the state fire marshal adopted. So it really handcuffs us as a local municipality with the ability to be able to enforce our local fire mitigation efforts. With that, I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Okay, opening up to the council for questions?
The only question is, I assume Larkspur is going to be adopting the same thing since Central Burn Fire, the two towns are aligned?
Yes, that's correct. They're all identical. And as I mentioned, um, with our fire inspector, they got together on July 1st with all the fire code officials within the county to try to make sure that all the fire codes within the county are best aligned the best we possibly can. And I think for the first time within my career in the fire service, I think they're the most aligned within all the agencies within the county.
Thanks.
Anything else down here? Jim? Rosa? Just one question. Are there, is there anything that stands out as a substantial difference from the local code that you're recommending versus the state? Are there things where we're?
So one of the biggest things for us is we've had a sprinkler ordinance within the county of Marin since the 1990s. And the state of California didn't start requiring fire sprinklers till after 2003. And the only other thing that we have that's pretty unique with us is that we require a fire sprinkler to be put in after the fact when you do a substantial or significant renovation of your home, which is different what the state does. So we're a lot more progressive than they are. And then when you start looking at a lot of the fire code amendments that are made within California Fire Code, those typically come out first here in Marin as local ordinances. For example, um, your PV ordinance that's within the California Building and Fire Code started out as a local amendment here within Marin County. So we can be proud that we've always been first moving forward with a lot of our, uh, progressive fire codes. And so that's kind of where I see some of the differences are.
So just to clarify, there, there's, there's no statewide fire sprinkler code? That's something that we require?
Not for a substantial remodel, only for new construction.
And is the rule still 50% or more?
That is.
That you affect the house, then you're required to put in the fire sprinklers? I know that's a controversial thing. I hear about fire sprinklers a lot. I don't know why, but.
It is, but if you start looking at the pros and cons for it is if you start looking at homes and the statistics that are out there by the National Fire Protections Authority, to my knowledge, there are no known fatalities in a residential structure fire that has working smoke detectors and a working fire sprinkler system. So to me, the cost out, or the benefits of one life outweighs the cost of putting a fire sprinkler system. And so if we want to be progressive and try to protect all of our existing stock, especially here in Marin, where we're pretty much a built out community, and if we want to be as safe as we possibly can, we have to be progressive with these ordinances.
So this rule applies to the affordable housing project coming in and all the other multiple?
Since those are brand new constructions, those are required.
Those will have sprinklers anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for my, allowing my diversion there. And Jim's come up with another question.
Yes, your definition of a driveway, uh, page 11, it says driveway is a vehicular ingress, egress, access route that serves no more than two dwelling units. What about these private something or others that have like a dozen houses?
Yeah, so those are pre-existing non-conforming. So these were probably one home that did several lot splits but never widened their existing driveway or easement. And so that easement remained to 12 feet, sometimes less. And so what we're doing is we've realized that for evacuation purposes, that throughout the county, anything that there's more than two living dwelling units, we can look at it as that's more than a driveway, that's a roadway. So when someone's putting in a subdivision, we, the question we ask, is it a driveway or is it a roadway? Because those are two different dimensions when we start looking about access and egress.
So if somebody's doing a bunch of lot splits up and down a private something or other, you would treat it as a private road?
I would treat it as a private roadway and require a 20-foot wide access route.
Okay. And when, when is that in effect?
When is that in effect? When they come in to do the subdivision and the lot split? So like, for example, we've got a, um, an empty parcel within our other jurisdiction of Larkspur that wants to put in several, I think it was four or five lots, so they need to put in a 20-foot roadway. Now they're having difficulty putting it in that. Their only other option is to reduce it to two parcels. And then it's a driveway. And so they have those two options on how they want to maximize their land use.
Okay. And you've been enforcing it?
That's correct.
For all the splits like last year and the previous?
Yes, exactly. So when we start having, um, an urban lot split or an SB 9 lot split, our objective standard is they need to require a 20-foot wide fire apparatus access road.
Okay.
And so that's our objective standard regardless of a lot split. We always look at new, um, and even substantial remodeled homes on these pre-existing lots. And if they can't meet that minimum 20-foot wide standard, then we have a, a section within the code for alternate methods and materials, where now that the property owner or developer can then propose alternates to try to offset because they can't meet that model code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, thinking we've gotten all our questions in, is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask any questions or make any comments about this item? Not seeing any. Is there anyone online with their little golden hand raised?
No one online, and I don't know if Councilmember Beckman had any comments. We lost your video for a little bit. Okay. Um, no hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for comments and/or a motion?
Move unless you want to comment.
You got a comment? Go for it.
I'll move.
Well, you'll move for approval? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Yeah?
Unless you want to comment.
Oh, no, I don't.
Second.
Okay.
I don't think I heard you make the motion.
Just to clarify, that was a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Yes, 6B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, moving on to 6C, consideration and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending Title 15 Building and Construction of the Corredamadera Municipal Code by repealing and reenacting Chapter 1504, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Wildland Urban Interface Code and the 2024 International Wildland Urban Interface Code. So the wildland, I assume we go back to Ruben for that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and, uh, members of the council. Once again, Ruben Martin, your local fire chief. We are here today to, um, introduce an ordinance amending Title 15, in particular, Chapter 1504, which is, uh, your section of the town's Local Wildland Urban Interface Code. For the first time in California's history, the California Building Standards Commission has created a new part, Part 7 of their Title 24, which took, as I mentioned earlier, sections from, um, Chapter 49 of the California Fire Code, which dealt with fire reduction and fire hazard within the WUWE. It also took, uh, chapter of the residential code, residential chapter, section 337, which dealt with construction methods of residential buildings. And then it also took Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, which dealt with extra wildfire, uh, ignition and construction methods for buildings, multifamily and commercial buildings within, um, the wildland urban interface. So all those codes were all modeled after the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. The last time the town adopted an entire WUWE code or wildland urban interface code was in 2006. Or actually 2008, when the codes changed. And for the first time, um, agencies were starting to adopt wildland urban interface areas. And that was post the 2003 Cedar Fires, which burned through most of San Diego County. Um, and after that, the, uh, governor of California, through the Art of Schwarzenegger and the Bloomberg Ribbon Commission, created a, a report that came out that then identified areas on what we needed to do as, um, within building within the state of California to try to reduce the exterior vulnerability of all of the building stocks within California, to try to reduce the number of homes that we're losing under these conflagrations that have been happening. So before you, um, what we have is our, uh, fire inspectors and fire code officials in July of this year, after the California Building Standards Commission published the code, reviewed the California WUWE code and made sure that it aligned with our local defensible space standards, with our local building code standards, with our, made sure that they were aligned with all of our WUWE codes, defensible space, setback requirements and so forth, so that way when we adopt it, it's in alignment. One of the biggest things that we added within the California WUWE code was the ability for property owners to pull a permit to get exterior wildfire protection systems, which aren't permitted yet within the state of California as a permit. Our goal within Marin is to try to find out where are these systems being installed? Are they being installed correctly? Is there a way in a mechanism for us to shut it off in the event of a major conflagration, especially if it's affecting our local water supply? Because if we start thinking about 4,500 homes within our hillsides, all with exterior fire sprinkler systems, now that, as we saw in Southern California, it impacts your local water system. So we want to be able to identify where they're at in the event that we have to isolate them and shut them off. With that and with the California WUWE code, what it also requires us to do is to publish a WUWE map that before in 2008 was adopted separately as a separate ordinance. Now it has to be adopted alongside your triannual code adoption. So what we did is we went ahead and updated our map. Um, and it's up before you on the screen with our WUWE map. And there's two areas that we identified that for some reason were not included within the old 2008 maps. And we believe, um, there may have been, um, maybe some political reasons back then because we were just trying to guess of where we were putting the lines. So a lot of times they split, um, front yards and backyards from certain individuals or would split, um, street to street where it's just splitting the properties between the backyard separations, which didn't make sense for us, especially when it comes to enforcing the regulations, doing defensible space inspections and trying to make it easy for our, um, community members to understand why the rules and regulations are different for my neighbor who's right next door to me and I'm sitting right here. And so those two areas that we looked at were up in East Corredamadera in the areas of like Enterprise and Constitution, were never included in the WUWE, but yet Endeavor and Granada were, which never made sense to us. And another portion was there was a small sliver in Palm Hill right along, um, I want to say Baltimore, where it intersected with our, um, Corredam, or our Larkspur map, where it felt like the two streets bifurcated and they didn't line up. So we went ahead and corrected that to make it easier for inspectors when they're out enforcing the rules and regulations, um, to make it a little easier. With that, um, we have the same options we have tonight. Is introduce the ordinance as proposed, set a public hearing. Two, you can instruct staff to revise the proposed ordinance and come back to you to reintroduce with amendments or direct staff for more information regarding the proposed ordinance. However, notwithstanding, as I mentioned, this ordinance will go into effect come January 1st, regardless of whether we adopt it or not. And with that, I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Thanks very much. Questions?
I just have a couple. Did MWPA have any input with the subcommittee or any interaction with MWPA?
Yeah, so we had, um, MWPA, we had, um, our fire hazard mitigation specialist, Todd Lando, provide some of the language, especially when it comes to home hardening within the, within our, um, ordinance to try to, and within our findings, more importantly, so the state can understand why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay. And then probably loaded question. Do you know if this helps with insurance, like cancellations and stuff like that?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
Or I don't think it has a, an effect. I think the insurance companies, um, base their rules and regulations based on their own proprietary method of analyzing the risk hazards.
Okay, I know it's just been a hot button.
It has, yeah.
The last couple of years or so. And the last question is on the WUWE maps. Who determined, is that, um, you guys had to determine that? Or is that the state that determines?
Uh, we at the local level. Because if you remember, um, so the state identifies fire hazard severity zones based on a risk of when a fire could start. We here at the local level figure out where the existing building stock is or where their, that intermix of buildings are and how close they are within an open space area. And so we make that determination from there, but they provide guidelines. And then based on local findings, we then make those determinations.
Okay. And hopefully those maps don't change that often, right?
Typically, no. Our map, this is the first time it's changed since 2008.
Okay.
That we've adopted it or made amendments to it.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Rosa?
Um, when we talk about the exterior sprinklers, you're talking about exterior sprinklers that are specifically for protecting the house from fire?
From wildland fires, yes.
Wildland fires, okay. And then you were mentioning that you wanted to know where they are and have a way of shutting them off? And is there, what is a situation where, um, you make the determination to turn it off? I mean, if it's already on and it's protecting, or at least the homeowner believes it's protecting their home, and then you make the determination to shut it off, is there any risk that, oh, if something catastrophic does happen to their home or it's damaged in any way, that the fire department is somehow at fault or at risk of being determined at fault?
I think there's always a risk. You know, there's always a risk in everything that we do.
Yeah.
And you know, everything we do, there's always scrutiny. For us, what we're looking at is can we protect the water supply the best we can? You know, when we start thinking about, um, how much water we have locally, it's limited to what the reservoirs can hold and what is located within the existing water tank system. That is if they're kept full. So depending on the time of day, you may think you may have a million and a half gallons of water. For example, we thought we had a, a tank that was filled with 1.5 million gallons to top of Greenbry, and to our knowledge, it's empty and taken out of the system, and we were never notified. So there's stuff like that, that, you know, there's, so there's always that risk. And for us, we've always, ever since what we've saw in Southern California with the water system being impacted, our fear is that now we have homes throughout the entire county using these. And then are they now being affected? Or is it just an open butt because the home's already been impacted? And now can we isolate that? Because the home's already been impacted, and now can we isolate that?
Right.
To try to keep and protect the water system that's remaining within the rest of the town.
Okay, thank you. Eli, anything? No? Okay, I think we've heard our questions. I don't have any questions on this one. Let's go to our audience and see if there's anybody who'd like to weigh in on this wildland urban interface code adoption. Anybody online?
We don't have hands raised from attendees online, and we didn't receive any email and public comment for this item.
Okay. Bring it back to council then for any comments.
I have a quick comment, and I can make the motion as long as I don't have to read the whole thing. Thank you. I just want to thank Chief Martin, also Chris, and also I want to thank Phoebe and also Bernie. I know these ordinances, a lot of people don't pay attention to this, and I know it's a lot of work, so I just appreciate all the work that you've all done on this stuff. And thank God it's only three years, every three years hopefully. But again, thanks for all the hard work. And with that, I can go ahead and make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
There are second?
Second.
And roll call vote.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. That was three hefty items there we just lifted. Good job. So we don't have any other business items tonight, and that brings us to our council reports. We will start with town manager. He wants to say something to Amy.
No, 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 thank you.
Thank you for coming, Amy, even though you weren't.
Going to give a quick, quick food truck update real quickly and just mention that we are aware of, you know, some changes. I think I mentioned at the last council meeting, some changes to the food truck program and where the, where the existing food truck is located. So that's underway. We're seeing how some of the reaction to that at the moment, but that's just, we're trying new ideas out. Right now, it's two days up at Mankin Park, two days at Town Park, and then we're trying to find another day over at the Cove parking lot by the park over there as well. So just stay tuned, more, more to come. But I know that's been, there's been a lot of interest in that. And I will say, just as a note, all of our ordinances, and I do want to acknowledge Amy Ackerman's work on ordinance review, a lot of those ordinances do get passed through Amy, who makes a lot of great changes and helpful comments on preparing sorts of clean documents. So just want to acknowledge Amy on that as well. Another item, you may have seen there, Marin IJ did report on the delay of the Tama Pius Overcrossing Project. I think that came out yesterday or Sunday. A piece of good news, since that came out, I did get notification that the project has been placed on the California Transportation Commission's agenda for October 15th and 16th. That's by all indications what I'm told. That's a great sign that things are heading in the right direction. And I would like to work with the mayor on a letter of support, probably over the next couple of days. And so with the council's sort of concurrence, and that's what I'd like to do with Mayor Ravazio to sign that and send that off. And I think TAM as well is also sending a letter of support as well, they've told me. So things moving in the right direction there. Just a quick note on the ADU Fair that was held this weekend. It was a great success. Thanks to our staff and ADU Marin for putting on and making great use of our facility here as well. But I think there were approximately 170 to 195 participants, maybe even more. Oh, okay, great, so you were here. Okay, so it was a, and it was outside, inside, over in the lobby, and then there was a huge tour afterwards as well. So a lot of, I think this was the first one in Marin, so just also just nice to bring in people from all over Marin to get some education on accessory dwelling units and how to build them. And finally, we had a good meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, with our Intergenerational Center project team, trying to really hammer out, at this point in the process, a schedule, project schedule. And just wanted to give you a heads up that we are looking at now a June opening date of next year, because it's going to take some time to get into building permit approvals. We have to publicly bid this project. So council will be seeing this in the future, and I'll, once we get through, we have another round of stakeholder engagement as well on the final design before we can even get to putting our building permit plans in, into the queue. And I want to thank in advance our, our building official and other town staff for helping that, advance that process as quickly as possible. I will say, I've informed age-friendly Corder Madera, our other partners on this, and Carla and others. So it's, it's a little bit longer than we anticipated a few months ago, but nonetheless, we're moving forward, and we're still finalizing the last little pieces here to the lease as well. So that's update on that, and I'll, I'll continue to provide updates to the council as we get more clarity on the schedule. Yes, Councilmember Andrews.
So the lease has not been finalized yet?
No. We're.
It's, it's down to the nitty gritty.
We're down to the last couple of pieces of clarify.
Have we been working on that lease?
Several months. This is a back and forth with an attorney from a national company that's located in North Carolina. That's contributed significantly to that, and it's not a California lease, so we're trying to adapt that to the needs of also a town government leasing a property from, that they're not used to. So it's, I, I share the, the question that's going on in your head, but we're doing the best we can to just move this forward and keeping everyone informed along the way.
If I can add one thing from being involved in this, this is an unusual use for this landlord. So bringing in a community center into what was a retail space is creating a lot of questions. But every indication is that they really want us.
Yes.
They like the idea, but it's just, you know, you're putting a, a square peg in a round hole, and it's taking some time to figure out the nitty gritty.
A good, many, they haven't actually visited the site that people are negotiating that, so it makes it challenging as well. So just the good news through the process is that we've identified a new room that's part of the original negotiated lease from a, from a cost standpoint. So it's a large storage space that will, I think, be put to great benefit and use. In any case, that's where we are. And I can, I'm happy if the council would like to do a fuller presentation, but I, I think the plan at this point was, let's get through the stakeholder engagement, and let's get sort of the consultants working on putting the technical plans together, and then we'll have a much, a firmer timeline to report out on.
And let's get a firm lease before we start.
Even, even better, even, yeah, even better. Do you want to report on something real quick?
I'm just going to tag on to the city manager's report. I just want to let you know that the California Supreme Court will be hearing argument in the pension obligation bond case tomorrow. So as you know, we have pension obligation bonds. There's a challenge arguing that it's unconstitutional under some of the reforms under Prop 218. The case has been fully briefed, and it will be argued tomorrow. And so it is, that's the, the final step before a decision is issued. So the court could, if the court formally submits the case, the decision should come out within about three, about three, three to four months. So just keeping you updated on the case.
And to that point, last little report, I'm going to be down at the Cal Cities Conference tomorrow through Friday, and I'm sure they'll be all over this, this case as well. Maybe I'll see Eli there as well at one of the sessions. But just wanted to report on that while I'm away. Obviously Rebecca will be in the office for any in-office needs, if you, if you need that. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right, who'd like to go first up here? Jim, do you have anything?
Things I've worked on. One, we had the first meeting of the Finance Committee, is sort of an organizational meeting. Carl Spurzen was made Chair, Larry Reed was made Vice Chair, and I think the next meeting is, what, November?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Then I attended the Marin wildfire prevention authority, and the key thing that they, you know, there's the usual items on the agenda, but they also pointed out that they have reached, I don't know how to describe it, but sort of an understanding of how their projects over on the coast will be processed by the Coastal Commission, because they had a difficulty in the past in that what they wanted to do didn't fit into any of the boxes that the Coastal Commission liked to put things in. So they've come up with an understanding on how their various wildfire prevention activities will fall. And then TAM, there's, they, see, they're still reevaluating how to allocate the tax revenue. And so, you know, if you want, I can send you a copy of what they're talking about, cranking something up a half percent, and another one down a half percent. The one thing that struck me is, in 2026, they're going to do the Crossing Guard Revaluation Project. And I would urge people that, I believe in our budget, we've got like $70,000 for council discretionary spending. He set aside about 25 grand of it in case we have to buy ourselves a Crossing Guard. You know, I, I don't want us to commit to it, but, you know, you know what happens every time they do this. So those are my reports.
Rosa. So on 9/17, I attended the Joint Santafal Corder Madera Chambers of Commerce Mixer at Polestar, very nice event, met a lot of local property owners, you know, commercial property owners who were looking for opportunities for some of the parcels that are becoming empty or are empty at the moment. 9/24, I attended the MCC MC meeting at Mill Valley at the Sweetwater, had some wonderful conversations with some of the surrounding local officials, great exchange of ideas. 9/29, I met with the Santafal Mayor Kate Cullen regarding, you know, getting some insight on the Santafal Sanitation District's effort to consolidate operationally with the central Marin sanitation. And then on 10/2, I met with Julie Kritzberger in my role as the liaison to the chamber to talk about visions and opportunities for the future of the Corder Madera Chamber of Commerce. Then also on 10/2, I met with the deputy district manager for the sanitation district to take a tour of the Paradise Pump Station. That was Fernanda Stefanik, and along with the assistant manager, sorry, assistant town manager Rebecca Vaughn, and Councilwoman Casissa. That's my report. Fred, you like?
I'm sorry. 9/17, I also attended a Chamber Mixer. 9/24, I attended the MCC MC meeting, which was hosted by Mill Valley and Sweetwater. That's the first time I've ever been in that place, and first time ever, yeah, and was never in there before. 9/26, I attended Bank of Marin's Spirit of Marin Awards, which are Jim Green with nothing bundt cake was one of our honorees, and we accepted an award from them. 9/30, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority had a special meeting, was largely closed door. 10/1, as Adam mentioned, there was an Intergenerational Center meeting. We got to meet with the designer and also the architect. I have suggested, whether I think it's been welcomed, is that once we get the lease signed at that location, to put up a banner saying, not with the date, just coming soon, Intergenerational Center, like 26, so at least people, it kind of gets the word out. 10/4, I briefly attended the ADU Fair that was here. It was really well done, and I thank Amy. I know you guys partnered with the ADU Center. It was really well done, I think it was really well attended. I know Ruben was here, Chief Martin, he was kind of like playing lifeguard to make sure that it wasn't maxed out capacity wise. So I'll say it was full of the capacity, but not maxed out. But this room was totally packed. There was tables outside, tables on the plaza. I just think it was really well done. And I think throwing in the tour also helped. I think thanking what, you know, the Corder Madera residents that opened up their ADUs, so people could actually tour to get a feel for that. 10/6, which was yesterday, I attended Marin Transit Board Meeting. The one thing to report there, I brought this up before, is called mascots. It was formed, I think, about a year and a half ago. It's Marin-Sonoma Coordinated Transit Service Plan. It's about nine different transit organizations covering Sonoma, Golden Gate Transit, and also Marin Transit. What they're trying to do is align the transit, so that there's not duplication, especially on the 101 corridor. We, we had a discussion on some schedule changes. All the other agencies are going to have those discussions also. There'll be a couple of public meetings, it has to be by law, and then hopefully it'll come back to our board in November for approval, and hopefully that'll get implemented in April. Just two quick changes, because they're also trying to combine scheduling changes. Right now, I think there's a bus 29, which runs, I think, from Cove. It helps drop kids off at Redwood and also Hall Middle School, and then continues on the Santafal. They're going to discontinue that, and they're actually going to create a 629 bus. That 629 will actually just be for the schools, and it will actually start from Paradise K out in Tiburon. So they realign that schedule. And then the 22, which also runs through Corder Madera, they're just going to cancel, I think, one early morning run and one late night run, because of low ridership. But there's those two changes. And most of these changes for mascots, it's affecting mostly central Marin, Mill Valley, Corder Madera, down in Marin City. And then last thing is, I attended the Chamber Board Meeting today. Big thanks to Amy, I kind of put her on the spot with food trucks, Best Western, Hunt Plaza, she did a really good job, had a lot of questions, that was good. And then just one last thing, today is Julie Kritzberger's birthday. So big happy birthday to Julie. And that's it, thanks.
And Jim, and Jim, the bundt cake man. Okay, so Eli, can we, can we, can we, can we hold it till adjournment? We're almost there.
Oh, yeah.
And we can't do candles, because Chief Martin's here.
Eli, you got anything?
Yes, well, first of all, happy birthday to Julie. That is super exciting. And I've got a few things as well. On September 17th, we had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency ad hoc committee meeting. On September 18th, I had an MCE Board Meeting. On September 19th, a Cal Cities Executive Committee Meeting. On September 24th, I was with many of you at MCC MC in Mill Valley. On September 26th, I attended the Spirit of Marin, along with Fred and Julie. On September 30th, I attended a celebration to kick off the Smart Train, like ballot initiative renewal process, so that, that's exciting. On October 3rd, attended the opening of the Marin-Sonoma Narrows Section, so we've now got three lanes all the way between here and Sonoma. On October 6th, what, yesterday? God, it's all blurred together. Had an MCE Executive Committee Meeting. And then, as you know, I am this week in Long Beach for the Cal Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then finally mine, Mankin Park project that is being spearheaded by the Corder Madera Community Foundation is making some good progress. We've had a couple of meetings to look at the plans which are coming along. And today, one of the designers that the town is working with made a special trip out to do a little tour of the park, and had some more really nice ideas on how to, you know, make it work as an amphitheater without ruining it as a park. So they are really working hard to sort of serve two very diverse needs. I have heard from the community that the food trucks issue is being solved somewhat, so I think just making that less of an intense use up there was good. The parking remains controversial. There's a lot of support for changing that four-hour zone to a two-hour zone, so that, because there's a lot of people now who, who come and park to take long bike rides, and if they could do that and park across the street, then it would leave more. then it would leave more spaces open for the two hour salon visit, Pilates visit, hamburger, whatever, whatever people are coming in for. So been hearing good things about the park overall, though. Overall, even though I will not be mayor next year, somebody else will be, I'm hoping that we're all thinking about January and when we plan our work plan for the year. And in previous years, we've asked all the commissions and committees to come up with their feedback there and get it to the council and staff as to what they think priorities should be for 2026. And I hope we'll get, you know, Parks and Rec and Planning Commission and climate and all of our committees telling us what they're hoping to have on the work plan next year, so that we get enough, but not too much. You know, we know we're a small staff and we're limited, but we want to make sure we're doing the right things. The Marin Healthy Youth Organization, which I'm a member of, I'm continually really impressed with them. And I wanted to note that there's a retail store in San Rafael, you know, we've, we've made retail cannabis stores not legal. And yet there's one that's, because it's hemp, they've been kind of getting away with opening up with even these high THC psychoactive products that they're selling to young people. And the city of San Rafael has come in a couple times and shut them down. And now they're open again. There's a Sweet Leaf dispensary where the youth are going tomorrow at 4:00 PM at 805 Fourth Street in San Rafael to let the owner know that they, that their sales to minors are not welcome. So anybody who wants to join that is invited to come. And then the invitation that we hope you're all already accepting is to be at Oktoberfest this Saturday from noon to 5:00 PM. I'm really excited about this one because if you've been following, you know that it's kind of been going back and forth. The beautification committee did it for a while, then the Lions Club took it over, and it's kind of going back and forth. And this year, for the first time, they're really working together and everybody's happy and it's looking good. So if we have a good turnout and the proceeds are good, it will be a really nice new beginning for this 32-year-old event in Corder Madera. So hope to see you all there. And I think that's all I had. And so that takes us to number nine, which is a discussion of a draft agenda for an upcoming, oh, wait, sir? Yes. Councilmember Beckman, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just, just for this upcoming item.
Oh, okay. Go right ahead.
Oh, I, yeah.
Regarding items on, wanted or suggested for the upcoming agenda?
Yes, I was just going to request that we agendize a resolution in support of, is it God, I believe it's SB 627, I want to say, but it's a climate superfund bill that seeks to create a sustainable and recurring source of revenue at the state level to fund the types of adaptation projects that Corder Madera has outlined to protect our town in our climate adaptation plan. I know we heard public comment on this item earlier today. I'm just requesting that we move forward with agendizing this item so that we can hopefully support this bill getting out of committee promptly in January.
I would support that. This is the one they're calling the polluters pay bill, right? Where it's all about actually, yes, okay. Does any, do we have to agree on that or we just, okay. Great. What else? Anything else? I was going to put that on mine too, so thank you. Anybody else have anything else for the agenda? Nothing? Okay. Well, then I would like to adjourn in memory of Jane Goodall. She was my hero. I, from a little girl, watched this wonderful lady getting to know chimpanzees, and I just thought she was amazing. So I'd like to adjourn in her honor.